Okay.
Mike Johnson is going to lead us.
Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call please, Sienna.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lousie.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent. Here. Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Sienna. So we do have a presentation tonight for Proposition 68 for our Parks and Rec, which we're excited to hear about. But we have some oral comments from the public and we do have one member of the public that I know for sure who wants to speak. So I'm going to go ahead and open up oral comments from the public and invite Dr. Stephanie Dittmer to speak.
Thank you very much for accommodating me as the schedule allows. My name is Dr. Stephanie Dittmer. I'm a resident here of Fortuna and a practicing family medicine physician doing obstetrics in Fortuna for the last 10 years. And over the weekend, we had public announcement by the Providence St. Joseph's Medical Group or hospital system that they will be closing obstetric here at Fortuna starting July 1 of this year. And I wanted it to be officially on record that the physicians here in our Eel River Valley, as those of us that are family medicine physicians and our colleagues here are in.
Stephanie, we lost you.
Position to that. Can you hear me at this point?
Yes.
Okay. That we are concerned about the potential threat to the lives of moms and babies that would be unable to receive care in a timely manner if bypassed Redwood and sent to St. Joseph's Eureka. We do believe that the information that's being presented by the healthcare system is not an accurate reflection and that the data that we're being presented is manufactured to a certain extent. The volumes overall have been decreased for births across the country and in our county, but the healthcare system has closed their OB office and they've also had a director hired that actively pushes the OBs to deliver in Eureka and doesn't offer Fortuna as a site of delivery. Therefore, the numbers are artificially decreased as part of their argument. There's also concern that they have not been forthcoming regarding the number of physicians recruited to this area. So we recruited 10 physicians currently here to our county that do family medicine with obstetrics, five in the Eel River Valley. Three have already left because of the difficulty and challenging nature of environment that the healthcare system has made it for us to practice obstetrics. So though they discuss the loss of 10 OB gyns, we've actually gained 13 FPOBs and that's a steady supply of FPOBs that we could have here to keep obstetrics open in Redwood. So we do, we do have significant concerns that this decision has already been made and that the lives of our moms and babies are at risk. There is a website called savemomsandbabies.org and there is also an email info@savemomsandbabies.org and a Facebook site that if the community would like to rally around the idea of keeping obstetrics, that that's at least a site for people to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Dittmer. Does anyone have any questions before she leaves us? I know it's not like a, an agendaized item, so we can't say too much, but if anybody has anything specific they would like her to address, we could ask her to do that.
I appreciate her comments and candor in addressing that and I hope that we can, as a public, approach the decision makers at Providence and see if we can do anything to turn this decision around. And I thank her for coming in.
Dr. Dittmer, is this decision final or is there still wiggle room on this?
The decision was finalized by the board in Santa Rosa and so that's when the announcement was made this weekend. It was two to three days after the decision was finalized by the board. We no longer have an active board here in our county. Providence regionalized the board to Santa Rosa.
So is there something that we can do to change their minds?
My personal opinion on the matter is that the way to make that decision be changed is to go above the hierarchy heads of our local regional area and go to the Providence St. Joseph's leaderships in Washington State where the company is actually centralized and organized out of that has an advantage to the place of sort of corporate hierarchy. But the reality is, is that the solution that us as family medicine physicians are posing is actively supported in Washington State where the corporation is headquartered, i.e. family medicine doctors like myself and like Dr. Esslin train in Washington State because it is known to be one of the best states in the country to train doctors to work in hospitals, work in clinics, do obstetrics and do surgeries. So the corporate headquarters actually has a longstanding history of training and using people like us and I believe that going to the higher ups is the way to potentially navigate that within the company. The second avenue I would suggest would be through our attorney general. Our previous attorney general, Kamala Harris, who's now vice president, was the one who brokered the agreement that when Providence and St. Joseph's merged, they had to keep all service lines open. Because in our industry, in healthcare industry, it is clearly demonstrated over and over that when you merge companies, patients lose access, that service lines decrease. This is what is repeatedly found in our healthcare industry. So the other avenue would be to go to our current California attorney general and try to see what could be done on a legal basis to maintain our obstetric services. I'm very, I'm very, I'm very scared as a physician who gets called on the regular basis to run in and do emergency C-sections to save moms and babies, that there's going to be outcomes that are adverse.
So what can we do as a community?
I think as a community, we need to reach out to our attorney general. We need to reach out to the heads of Providence, Dr. Rod Hockman. He is the chief medical officer of the entire organization.
Okay, thank you.
So can I piggyback on that question? Is there a local group or part of this savemomsandbabies.org? Is there organized meetings that we can attend to become better educated and to maybe put some financial resources behind it as an individual, not necessarily as a city, but? And is there a letter that the city could write that would help bolster your, your cause that we can rally around behind you?
Yes, I'm hoping that that's what the community organizing behind the Save Moms and Babies campaign will be able to do is to produce a community-wide series of petition and letters as well as potentially other financial means to help maintain the service line. I don't know the details of, of, of what the website and what the group organizing is, but I do know that that's how things are going to proceed from here to allow there be a centralized way to do so.
And Madam Mayor, you might mention the forum that would be coming up?
There is some type of forum on Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. I don't have a lot of details and I'll be talking more about this in my council reports, which seems more of an appropriate place since this is not on the agenda. So I'll be talking about it there. So I just appreciate you coming in and, and, yes, Dr. Dittmer, I know it puts you in an awkward position and I just appreciate the fact that you were willing to step out and stand up for what you believe. And I think she's frozen. All right. Do we have other public comments?
This is Danny Kelly. I'd like to speak if, if there's no one.
Yes, Danny, please do.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Danny Kelly. I'm a, I'm a father of four, live in Hydesville, but have a business in Fortuna. I also wanted to speak about the announced closure of obstetric. I also wanted to speak about the announced closure of obstetrics at RMH. As a business owner, I, I don't have to tell you that real estate prices go down. A fewer people can be recruited to your area when you lose services like this. Fortuna needs more young couples that are thinking about having children, not less. And unfortunately, I think the way that this is played out, it's kind of a little bit long and a little bit late in the game for us. I know Dr. Dittmer has been trying to beat the drum of this for a long time, but we have a local administration that does not seem to want to listen to our community. For those of you who are asking, what could we do? Another course of action is to reach out to Paul McGinty and the philanthropic arm of our local Providence St. Joseph's and let it be known that this is not our wishes and that philanthropy will be withheld. I'm not sure it will change the game at this point. I feel really frustrated that our community continues to donate money, donate time and volunteers and continue to not be heard on topics like this. It's very frustrating to me for a very profitable nonprofit company like Providence St. Joseph's to continue to rely on the community and then to ignore the community in these things. So please do visit the website and please do reach out and get involved. I, I don't, I personally don't believe that it's over yet. And I will be fighting until my belief about that changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Danny. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else lines, Sienna?
I don't see anybody indicating they'd like to speak at this time.
Is this still public comment?
Yes. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Diana Rio is the Fortuna Business Improvement District. I just wanted to, in a, in an opportunity for transparency, let the council know that FBIT did receive a five-page complaint with 12 points. Some of it, most of it can be found on our website, but we are addressing it. And so I know that the council or some of the council members have also received that complaint. And I just want to open the conversation with the council and the bid. Just remembering that we're an organization that works with the business community as well as with the city of Fortuna. So if any council members have questions before we address it, maybe we could, maybe you could send your questions or input or comments to my office, fortunabusiness.com. We have a form on there. You can just send it or you can email it to fbit@fortunabusiness.com. And we're going to be addressing it and then we'll be sending it out as a Q and A, those questions to all business license holders. So if anybody else has those same questions or similar questions that are maybe less personal, we'll be able to address those. So I just wanted to take a minute and let the council know that we're here, we're addressing it. We heard about it and we, we want to be really responsive. So if any business has a question about what, what the bid does or what we do for our business community, we're happy to have those conversations. And just wanted to take this time to remind the council that we're here and working for you and our business community. And if you need anything, please let us know. Thank you so much. And thank you to Dr. Dittmer and Danny Kelly and Dr. Esslin for all their work they're doing right now for the hospital. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Diana. Is there anyone else? Seeing nobody. All right, we'll close our public comment period and we'll move on to our presentation, Proposition 68 Parks Environment and Water Bond Grant Presentation by our Parks and Rec Director Cameron Mull. Cameron.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Long, and good evening, City Council and citizens of Fortuna. So I'll be giving a brief presentation here on some exciting upcoming grant opportunities for the city as well as the Rona Community Recreation and Park District, in which the city is currently serving as staff for that district. So, Sienna, am I good to share my screen?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you. Can everybody see that? All right. Yes, I can see that. Okay, perfect. So Prop 68 was a parks and water bond that was passed by California taxpayers in 2018. And so with that comes some opportunities for some competitive grants, as well as some per capita funds, which I'll get into here in a little bit. And again, we're going to go over two Proposition 68 statewide park program grants that the city of Fortuna, as well as the Rona Community Recreation and Park District, will be submitting here by the end of next week. So quick overview on these competitive grants. So this is the final round of the SPP grant program. They, there were going to be five rounds, but they combined the fourth and the fifth round, and which leaves more money available. We did apply in the third round, however, we were unsuccessful in the Newburgh Park Rehab and Expansion Grant that we will be again submitting a grant for. But this time around, there's about $100 million more available. So it gives us a little bit better chances. And throughout previous rounds, it's kind of whittled down some of the competition. So we're feeling pretty good. There is no match required for this grant, which is a good thing. And this grant has to be used for acquisition and/or development of at least one recreation feature. Grant projects have to be in between $200,000 and $8.5 million. That's the cap. Application deadline, as I mentioned, is next Friday. So I'll be busy this week and next week just sharpening things up as we get those submitted to California State Parks. Public outreach is an essential component of this grant. And if you all recall, we did our public outreach meetings for the Newburgh Park Rehab and Expansion Grant. And so basically, the state wants to see that each entity is putting forth a committed effort to receive feedback from the public on what recreational features the public would like to see. And so the concepts and the grant applications are geared around that public input. These grants are points-based. Essentially, everybody starts with zero points. And there's lots of different factors as far as gaining points. Certainly, communities that are a little bit more underserved have the advantage in this regard. So again, we're hoping that we can be a little bit more competitive and some of those communities have already been funded. So awards for these grants are going to be announced in late summer 2021. I put that in quotation marks because they say late summer 2021, and I hope that we do hear by then. But typically, these things have a delay. Last time we applied, they said late summer 2019, and we didn't hear until, I think it was spring 2020. So maybe, we're hoping that we hear of awards late summer 2021. Projects have to be completed by March of 2025. So, you know, it doesn't give us a whole lot of time, but enough time to pull off a successful project. And so again, I'm going to go over these two projects, a Newburgh Park Rehab and Expansion, that the city will be submitting a grant application for, as well as an aquatic facility that will be submitted with assistance by the city for the Rona Community Recreation and Park District. So they'll start with Newburgh Park Rehab and Expansion. So this is a $7.5 million project. And again, it includes, a component of this is rehabbing the existing Newburgh Park. And that would include crowning the fields, basically adding some more material to the field so that they drain properly. As we know, Newburgh Park is a very wet, tends to be a very wet field. So we want to do what we can to mitigate all that drainage by crowning fields and adding some bioswells or retention basins that will absorb some of that water and drain it away from the fields so fields can be played more on a year-round basis. It would include two outdoor basketball courts, three outdoor tennis courts, which would also be lined for pickleball, which is a very popular sport. And it would also include additional parking. And I'll go over the conceptual design here in a little bit, which will show all of these different features. Then we move on to the expansion of the park. So this would be the acquisition of that adjacent 8.4-acre parcel that's currently owned by the McLean Foundation. And so this project would include a purchase of that parcel and then adding some, some features, some recreational features to that parcel. The most major of which is the skate park. That, of that $7.5 million, the skate park is about $1.5 million of that project. So that's a major component of that expansion. It would also include additional parking, a parking area over on that 8.4-acre parcel. There'd be a cook shack building that would house bathrooms and then a nearby picnic area. Soccer fields. We would be able to expand our field use and actually be able to delegate more areas for soccer and then hopefully be able to play some more baseball in the fall. There's usually a lot of competition for fields, especially in the fall over at Newburgh Park. Soccer is a huge sport and they need a lot of field space. So this would allow us to still allow soccer, but then also hopefully still be able to allow some fall ball or some fall baseball programs on the ballfields. And then also a perimeter and facility access paved ADA trails, which I'll show here in the conceptual design. So this would be, this is a Google map view of Newburgh Park and that 8.4-acre parcel that we would be acquiring with this grant and expanding the park. So it would be an additional 25% in size if we were awarded this grant and expanded that extra acreage. So here's the conceptual design. City Council has seen this before. And keep in mind, these are concepts, so there could be minor changes and tweaks along the way if we are awarded this grant. So I don't know if you can see my mouse, but I'll just go over some of the things I just discussed. So you got additional parking over here, the two basketball courts. Right now, we only have one outdoor basketball court, and that's in Rona Park. So it'd be nice to have some additional courts. Keep in mind that Newburgh Park is the Dennis Went Sports Complex. So, you know, we want to, we want to kind of consolidate a lot of the sporting programs and events over to Newburgh Park. Here are those three outdoor tennis courts, which again would be lined for pickleball. It does terminate out on the existing main soccer field, but we'd still be able to have two smaller soccer, soccer fields and then move the regulation fields over onto that 8.4-acre parcel. Again, freeing up some of these ballfields are four ballfields, two hardball and two softball fields. And you can kind of see here near the bottom, some of those bioswells and retention basins that would take some of that water and move it off of the fields. We also actually have a shade structure over the playground, which not only would provide shade during the summer months and when it gets hot, but also protect the kids when they're on the playground from foul balls, from softball number one and softball two. So that would be a safety issue there. And then moving over to the 8.4-acre parcel, you can see the additional parking area here. So there's 80 additional spaces there with access right off of Rona Ville Road. You've got the skate park here in the corner, right along the road. And then you've got the cook shack and bathrooms and then a picnic area. And it's kind of hard to see, but you can see the gray trails, the ADA paved trails, not only around the perimeter of the park, but again, it would, it would provide access to each of the different recreational facilities or features within the park and make it easy for people to get around. So I'll move on now to the Rona Community Recreation and Park District. They are submitting a grant to construct an aquatic facility, a pool. That project is $8.3 million, so almost meeting that cap of 8.5. The future pool location will be located on the McLean Foundation campus, adjacent to Newburgh Park. And it would fall between the Jean Lucas Community Center and the Humboldt Senior Resource Center. There has been a 30-year lease already established with the, with the Rona Rec District and the McLean Foundation. So that's a good, that's a positive, as well, and existing infrastructure to support pool utility. So when the Jean Lucas Center and the Humboldt Senior Resource Center went in, they had planned in advance to potentially and hopefully one day have a pool on site and therefore install utilities that would support such a large facility using as much water as a pool. So those are both positives. And again, going back to the public outreach, all the facility amenities that you're going to see here for the conceptual design were based on that community input from the, the various stakeholders and community members through a feasibility study that was performed a couple of years ago with the Rona Rec District. Aquatic facility location, again, you can see Newburgh Park here over on the left. And this is the McLean Campus here, including that 8.4-acre parcel here, if you can see my mouse moving around. And here's the Jean Lucas Center. Here's the Humboldt Senior Resource Center. And this is where the pool was slated to go in. Great thing is, is there's already lots of parking that would be able to support a large swimming meet or any kind of aquatic event that would happen at that pool. So that's a great thing. And here's just some exterior current pictures of that site. So you've got the Jean Lucas Community Center here, Humboldt Senior Resource Center here. If you can see my cursor, and then in between that here would be the pool. Down below that, same thing, this open lot here between the Jean Lucas Center, Humboldt Senior Resource Center is the home of the future pool. And here's their conceptual design for that pool, again, which could be altered or changed once construction were to begin or the planning phase were to begin. So the meat and potatoes of this are a competitive six-lane competition pool for lap swimming. That is a 25-yard pool. And then it would have a separate warmer pool, obviously shorter in length. But this would be great for teaching swim lessons and for senior water aerobics so that those groups aren't getting quite as chilly in the big pool and would have the ability to not have to worry about things like depth and be a little bit more confident and secure in the shallower, warmer pool. And then, of course, a lot of your normal amenities, like a lobby and office space, a men's and a women's locker room, a family changing room, storage room, and then a lifeguard room as well. This was created by Councilman Hunsicker, who did perform that feasibility study a couple of years ago. And so the next steps for the pool, you know, if it, if it does get funded, there are, there's a big unknown, and that is how are we going to pay for the maintenance and the operation of the pool? So we are working on a plan for that in conjunction with submittal of this grant application. So for that size pool, the cost of the annual operation and maintenance is about $350,000 per year. And that includes, you know, most of that is staffing, but it also includes all your costs after revenue. So this would be beyond revenue. And so we got to find a way basically to somehow cover those costs. So through that, we did an annexation and revenue generation analysis with Laco and Associates. And so they kind of looked at, okay, you know, do we annex or, you know, can we annex? And if we do, what would be the correct route to ask the taxpayers to potentially pay for the annual operation and maintenance? So annexation process can take up to a couple of years. And, you know, there is an application that you just submit through that process and it costs about $7,000 to $10,000, depending on how large of an annexation we would want to go. But one thing that we've been toying with is potentially annexing into the Fortuna Union High School District Boundary, which is larger than the city of Fortuna and yet even larger than the Rona Community Recreation and Park District boundary. So because we don't have a whole lot of time here and the difference is not that significant between annexation, I'll go into some of those, some of those details here. We looked at a benefit assessment as being identified as the ideal route. This is something that the Fortuna Fire District performed, I think it was a few years ago. So a benefit assessment, basically, these are mail-in ballots and you need 50, 50% or more of approval of received ballots of people, of those parcel owners. And so in the current Rona Rec District Boundary, there are 5,700, what, there are 5,700 roughly total parcels. And so without the annexation, if we put out a benefit assessment now and ask all of those parcel owners to submit a cost for each parcel, it would be about $60 per parcel annually per parcel owner. If we were to annex, let's say, for example, the Fortuna Union High School District Boundary, this is about 7, 7,500 parcels, then you're looking at about a $13 difference, about $47 per year per parcel owner. This process, process takes a little bit of time and costs a little bit more money, but is something that would need to be done in order to support the operation and maintenance of this pool. And so again, these would be future conversations that the city would want to have with the Rona Community Recreation and Park District. Either, either way, if they're awarded or not, but especially if they are awarded this grant, because time will be of the essence to get the pool constructed and find a plan, number one, to support that operation and maintenance costs. So, you know, we don't need to feel like we need to put all of our eggs into one, into just this SPP basket. It is the ideal grant, quite honestly, because the cap is so high. But there are future Prop 68 grant opportunities if we are not awarded either of these grants. And quite frankly, I think it'd be great if we got both of these grants. I mean, wow, what a huge benefit for the community recreationally. But even if we just received one of these grants, then, you know, still be a win situation. But we've got some future grant opportunities, however, if we, if we're not awarded either of those grants, the, one of them coming up is the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program Grant, also a Prop 68 California State Parks Grant, where there's $23 million available, so not nearly as large of a pool of money, also for acquisition or development of a new recreation feature. The deadline for this grant is November 5, 2021, this year in the fall. At least right now, that's where it sits. They may change that if they don't award the SPP grants until a little bit later, which they've done in the past. Project amount range is less than the SPP. Project amount range is less than the SPP. So you're looking at $200,000 to $3 million project. So certainly much far beyond what our current scope of work involves in both of our grant applications. But we'd still be able to do something with those amount of funds if not awarded the SPP. And then completion is the same completion by March 2025. There's also a regional park program grant, also coinciding with the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program Grant. However, the city is not eligible to apply for that, but special districts like the Rona Rec District are. So Rona Rec District would have a shot at that regional park program, not the city, but both the Rona Rec District and the city would have a shot at the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program Grant. And then of course, don't forget, we have our per capita program. So these are funds that have already been allocated to the city and the Rona Rec District. We still have to identify projects and there will be a grant application process. And so the city will receive $177,000 and change as well as the Rona Rec District. And so, you know, I put a little asterisk there because projects, we don't know what those projects were going to, will be until we know what our success is or not with the SPP grant. So if not awarded either of those grants, then we'll have to re-identify some projects utilizing those funds. And so hopefully there could be a partnership with the Rona Rec District. There has been discussion as far as that goes, again, depending on what happens with the SPP grant. In that case, we would have a combined total of $355,000 and change. For that per capita, we did find that there is no grant match. If you fall under a certain threshold for a minimum household income within that, the park areas. And so at this time, we do not anticipate any grant match for that per capita program. Whereas originally we anticipated having to use a 20% grant match. So that's the good news there. I don't want to take up too much more time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that any members of the city council might have, or if Merritt, if I missed anything that you wanted to add, please feel free to add that in.
No, I think you covered it Cameron. And really our idea right now is to be in a fallback position. If we're not successful with the first round in the SPP project, then take some elements particularly for Newburgh Park out of the existing plan that was developed and try to do those. And instead of doing the whole thing, it would be a subset. So a lot of benefit by having the conceptual design that was developed for Newburgh Park. And again, if we're not successful, we'll have to pick and choose which ones we can afford with the lower price tag of 3 million opposed to 7 or 8 million.
Thank you, Merritt. And the McLean Foundation has been good about holding now under that property. They would like to see the city take hold of that and be able to expand Newburgh Park. So, you know, if it's not with a competitive grant, we hope to at least be able to utilize a portion of, if not all of our per capita funds to at least purchase that property and do what we can on that property to expand Newburgh Park. So that would be the bare minimum throughout these Prop 68 grants.
So I was a little surprised that they went ahead and put the sign for the future pool up at the McLean Foundation. Now you've got the public thinking that it's a done deal when there's so much work to be done and there's no funding. And if it doesn't all come through and that sign has to be taken down, it's going to be this major uproar, I think. So I was actually just a little probably disappointed that they went ahead and did that.
Yeah. I want to say the goal in that was to, throughout this process, start to market the pool idea and the concept to the community. That way, if we do have to go to a benefit assessment, the community is already at least aware that the Rona Rec District is working on this pool endeavor and it doesn't come as a surprise. And so far luckily, there's been only positive support from the community as far as the pool. But you're right, Sue, the, the big question lies is how are we going to get it built? Hopefully we can get a grant to do that, but bigger than that is how are we going to pay for that operation and maintenance? So I think the Rona Rec District's goal and that sign was again, to try to gain that support so that if it does go to the ballot, that will help make that decision easier for community members.
Yeah, I just don't think they went about it quite right because people are already thinking it's a done deal. And when you have to go take that sign down because it didn't work out, it's, people are going to start accusing everyone of stealing the money and doing all the things that they've already been talking about over the years. So anyway, I don't think I would have done that, but they already did it. Does anyone else have any questions for Cameron?
I do, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. On the rehab and expansion slide, I saw the skate park. But what happens with the BMX bike track? Does that, is that gone then?
Nope. No, the bike park would stay. In fact, the bike park kind of falls in between here in the, near the outfield fence of softball one. And so now we, we don't plan to do anything with that. When, you know, when the bike park was paved, this conceptual design was already presented. And at that time, the plan was to just create a skate park and allow, you know, bike riders to utilize that space. But we really like to keep both features in the park. So the plan right now is to keep the current bike park and then with that expansion include in addition the skate park.
Good. That bike park, yeah, the bike track is used heavily. And so we really need to keep that.
Absolutely. Agreed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Cameron. Appreciate it. We'll move on to our consent calendar. We have seven items, including city council minutes, report of dispersments, adopt the 2021 Americans with Disabilities Transition Plan Update, authorize participation in the Employment Risk Management Authority Joint Powers Authority for Employment Practices Liability Coverage, Resolution 2021-02, continue the declaration of the existence of a local emergency in response to COVID-19, authorize destruction of selected police department files, adopt amended full and part-time fiscal year classification and pay rate schedules, Resolution 2021-04. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I just have a question for number four.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Mike, what's your question?
As a larger JPA, I noticed in the staff report, it talked about there, we're unsure of what the rates would be. We've budgeted money based upon last year for this item. And I was wondering if it's a larger JPA, we might be looking at lower rates. And I was just going to ask if it is member wise, if it's larger than the one we were in before. Perhaps Merritt knows that.
Yes, you know, Ciana Evans, our city clerk is also a risk manager. And so she's been providing the input on this. Ciana, do you want to answer that question?
I would love to answer that question. So yes, Mike, the pool that we'll be joining with is a larger pool. Parsac is, consists of 36 members, larger cities, some close to Fortuna size, some smaller. And I think that you kind of hit the nail on the head. We'll see some potential cost savings, but when we're talking about liability right now, I just attended last week, kind of a state of the market informational webinar that was hosted by Parsac actually. And there's lots of factors that play into what the premiums will look like. So while having a larger pool will be a benefit in that it will kind of spread out the cost amongst more members because the market is so inflated right now. We don't know if we'll see those cost savings anytime soon, to be honest. We're, we're more than likely going to see a large increase for our next fiscal year based on the state of the market.
A litigious society.
I hope that, I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I had a question on that as well. I, I just have a, have a problem with basically handing over a blank check for three years. That's what it sounds like with the, with their requirements. They can't give us any kind of an idea of what those premiums would amount to?
I, I can, I can do my best to try to answer your concern about the timeframe and also kind of put it into perspective. So Irma, the, the organization that's asking for the three-year commitment is only going to be providing services for employment liability practices. So the decision to join that pool within a pool was made by the larger group. So when you are making a decision and you're, you know, becoming part of this smaller JPA to focus on specific liability, you know, all of the committees that kind of make the decisions about what is going to be the best for the pool are made at an executive committee level. So we're deferring to our larger pool and board to help make those decisions, not just kind of pulling the trigger for the city, if you will.
Idea of the amount of premiums that other like sized cities of Fortuna are currently paying.
You know, I don't have numbers right in front of me, but we do actually have actuarial reports that show what the other members in our pool are paying for their premiums. It's something the board goes over often. But again, as I mentioned, when I was answering Councilmember Johnson's question, it's really hard right now to put a number on liability premiums because there's so many factors at play that are really, you know, putting pressure on those numbers. It has to do with the fires that took place and the floods that took place. And, you know, these things that are a little bit out of control of the cities. It's particular to the state, but it's also nationwide and it's also worldwide. So now put the snowstorms that came up this year on top of it. They're still assessing damage from those claims and there's a possibility that that could have an impact on the nation as well. So while that's kind of a nutshell answer, and we could potentially go into more detail in another setting, and I could have even potentially the general manager of REMIF currently come in and give the council kind of an update on the state of, you know, liability and the state of the market. But we're definitely going to see those impacts here. So it's hard to, it's hard to say that this is an average or typical year. It's hard to say that it's been an average or typical last three years. And we probably will see the impacts for a number of years to come.
Even though we're still talking about employment practices, liability coverage only.
Because it's wrapped up into the overall cost that we pay for our liability premiums. That's just a small component of that. So it's, it is a little challenging to break that out.
And Councilmember LoSi, just to add on to, to what Ciana is saying is really this is the self insurance pool and it's a group because we were seeing higher rates on the private market. So this was in response to seeing higher rates and this is an effort to get a lower cost. And so we don't have those exact numbers today. Usually we get those estimates in a little bit ahead of time and then we work into the calendar, calendar year budget as a part of the budget process when we receive those estimates. So, but again, this is a cost savings move to go with a self insured pool rather than a private insurance company, which may, you know, has a profit on top of what the actual costs are. So a little different, but again, that, that is our focus to reduce our insurance costs.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're sure that this will be less than going with another type of insurance coverage.
Yeah, Ciana can, can add more, but this is what the board decided would be the best route. And we have one member and one vote on that board. And so we're part of a larger group making decisions. And, you know, I, you know, at this point, we don't have the exact numbers. You know, and if the council's uncomfortable, we can bring it back as Ciana has mentioned. And we could have our director, Amy Northham come in and explain this. But again, this is their recommendation for keeping the lower rates and still maintaining that coverage and going to a self insured pool and trying to buy that insurance on the market.
I was thinking that this might've been covered as far as cost and that type of thing in a previous meeting before I came on as a council person, but.
It was a little bit, Councilmember LoSi, in that, you know, there was a presentation that was given because our current risk pool is getting ready to merge and become a new risk pool. And so part of that merger includes this recommendation that we become part of this other JPA that's going to provide these employment practices liability. And there's lots of moving pieces and it is not a really easy thing to explain. But again, we have to kind of lean on our general manager of REMIF. We kind of have to lean on the general manager of Parsac and we have to lean on the executive committee that our board voted on basically, you know, us as a, as a participating city member, we chose an executive committee to help make these decisions and recommend what was going to be the best for those merged pools. And this is the recommendation that that committee brought forward. So.
Sure. I, I understand that. If I, if I'm the only one who has a, you know, these kinds of questions, then fine. But if there are other council people who would like to see a presentation, I, I, I for one would like to hear. If we can get some kind of a, you know, some kind of a presentation or an update. I, I like to say, I just hate handing over a three-year period of blank checks.
It wouldn't hurt on my point of view to have another update with this. I don't know that we have to hold off on this, but to get an update on what we're looking at. I know I've seen REMIF and seen our workers comp be static and other places go up. So our rates went up and I've seen our rates. I've seen our workers comp cases spike and, but the rates don't go up. Just depends on what happens in the market and how many of the pool members have a claim. I mean, there's things that are out of everybody's control, but it wouldn't hurt to have an update on with, with the natural disasters and with employer law related to COVID and things like that, just to get a little update.
Councilmember Johnson, we could, we could bring a more comprehensive discussion on that at the budget time when we talk about all the different types of coverage and what our estimates are. And we're just starting to get those in now. And again, some of our property insurance and liability, we're expecting those to see, to go up. But again, this was a cost savings move. And I think if the council's not comfortable without having more detail, we don't have a detailed estimate yet, but going to an insurance pool. A self insured pool is going to be cheaper than buying it on the open market. But if you'd like to see estimates and some of the actual numbers from Amy Northham, then we'd be happy to have her come back if you're not comfortable with this.
I think I would say that we could go ahead and pass this if it's going to be cheaper than the open market, but I would like a presentation when they start coming up with the numbers so we can all understand how they got the numbers and what the cost is going to be. Sure. Close budget time, as Merritt suggested. Is everyone good with that?
Yep.
I'd be, I'd be good with that.
Okay. All right. So if we can put that on our schedule, that would be great. All right. Any more questions on the consent calendar comments? All right. How about motions?
Motion to accept the consent calendar.
We have a motion for items one through seven of the consent calendar. Ciana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember LoSi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to city council business, our first item is to approve a supplemental budget request to provide matching funds for United States Department Agriculture USDA grant to purchase a mini excavator. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I'll be providing the staff report, but it was prepared by Kevin Carter, our Deputy Director of Public Works, along with Bob Natt, our General Services Superintendent. And Kevin's on the line and he can answer some detailed questions if I don't get into those. Essentially what this item is, is the staff is recommending the council approve a supplemental budget request to provide the matching funds for USDA grant for the purchase of a mini excavator. Staff submitted the grant application to the USDA Rural Development Program in June of 2020 and were notified in August that the application was successful. The grant is for approximately the, for approximately a little over 50% of the purchase price of the mini, the mini excavator. The mini excavator was chosen as a target for the grant for multiple reasons. One, because this piece of equipment, we currently don't have an excavator. The city crews use a backhoe. They rented a mini excavator last year and they found it very useful for some specific projects, like cleaning out drainage ditches, working in tight spaces, do some utility work in alleyways, things like that. It, it's our hope that city forces will be, be able to use this piece of equipment and not have to contract out work so much because we don't have an excavator and that we can get some work done in a short period of time with, with in-house staff. Let's see. Public Works currently has two backhoes in its fleet. One of the backhoes will need to be replaced and taken out of service due to air quality regulations within the next few years. So it's our intention to replace that backhoe with this excavator purchase. Currently, the reason we're bringing a supplemental budget request is because this purchase is not in the current budget. The purchase amount of the excavator is expected to be $93,000. The amount of the grant from the USDA is 50,000, with leaving a required match from the city of 43,000.
Staff is requesting a little bit more than $43,000 uh to cover unforeseen costs. We're asking for a budget request up into fifty, up to $50,000 for the required match and $7,000 of that for any unforeseen costs. We don't expect to have to spend that. Sometimes you get the different licensing fees, air quality permits. Sometimes there's an add-on that our crews want to add on. You know, to get an option for the excavator. So we just want to make sure we have enough to cover it without coming back to the council. The requested funds would, would come from Fund 510 uh water reserves and Fund 560 sewer reserves, and they'd be moved into the budget under the Water Distribution Fund 500 and Sewer Collection Fund 550. A copy of the supplemental budget record, request form uh and grant notification letter are attached to the staff report. So with that, that concludes my staff report. Again, Kevin Carter's on the line to answer any questions if you have any other questions about this item.
Siana, do we still have the ribbon that has the call-in number for public comment? Is that something that's still showing on the screen?
It is.
Okay. Um, any questions from council at this point? If anyone from the public has comments, you can call the number that is showing on your screen and um give us your input on this item. We're just going to wait a couple of seconds. Receiving no calls, we'll move on to council comments. Motion.
I would just comment that I know how how handy those things are. And having had to work in tight places, you can get a lot of things done that you can't with a standard backup. And I think it'll be great for efficiency and ability.
Madam Mayor, I would, I would make a motion.
To approve the supplemental budget request?
I would, I'll move, I'll move to approve the supplemental budget request and purchase of a mini excavator by providing matching funds for a USDA grant.
Thank you. Second, do we have a second? All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to our next item, a public hearing to consider approving an amendment of ordinance number 2020-744 and amendment of section 17.06.220, Small Wireless Communications Facilities of the Fortuna Municipal Code Ordinance 2021-747. And this would be the first reading. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Um, I'll be presenting this, the staff report. I believe Liz Shory, our Deputy Community Development Director is on the line in case there are additional questions. But essentially, we're bringing this back. There were some inconsistencies in the language uh in the previous ordinance that we brought to the council. So this is really a cleanup. This is not something new. There's a few procedural, there's a few wording changes that needed to be made and our city attorney determined that this needed to come back to the council for two readings. So again, I apologize if we're bringing this back, but the error was caught at the code publishing level and, you know, we're glad they, they did. And so the intention is to bring this back, you know, the language cleanup on the staff report. What staff is recommending is that the council approve the amendment to the ordinance to add the language clarifying the intent and purpose of the ordinance um for the Small Wireless Community Facilities. On November 2nd, 2020, the city council adopted the Small Wireless Self-Facility Ordinance, establishing, establishing local standards that regulate the application processing, locational aesthetic standards and maintenance and operation of wireless facilities to the extent allowed by federal and state law. In the process of incorporating the code sections into the online Fortuna Municipal Code, several inconsistencies were noted. The Codeman will provide the necessary changes to remedy the inconsistencies. Um, the section one of the proposed ordinance will amend section 17.06.220 of chapter 17.06 of the Fortuna Municipal Code by striking the designated text from section 17.06.220. The deleted section created the unnecessary and duplicative enforcement process by referring, referencing Title 8 of the Municipal Code, whereas section 17.06.220 um relegation of the permit already creates an appropriate enforcement process. I'm not going to read through the text changes unless the council would, would like me to. They're including the ordinance attached to the staff report. And, and again, I'd be happy to go into some more detail if you would like. Um, there's no anticipated fiscal impact in the city's general fund as a result of these corrections and a copy of ordinance 2021-747 is attached along with the original ordinance, which is being corrected. So with that, that concludes my staff report unless the council would like to go into uh more detail on the proposed changes.
If anyone from the public has any comments on this item, please call the number on your screen. Um, council, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none and hearing no calls, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to hold the first reading of ordinance 2021 dash 747 and read by title only and continue the public hearing to Monday, March 15th, 2021 for a second reading.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Siana?
Ordinance number 2021-747, an ordinance of the city of Fortuna, amending ordinance number 2020-744 and amending section 17.06.220, Small Wireless Communications Facilities of the Fortuna Municipal Code. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to our next item. Okay, my thing is different than the one on here. I'm going to read the one on the.
Out of the air?
Yes.
Um, I see a hand raised, um, uh, phone number seven, six, eight, or six, eight, two, six, zero, three, nine.
Is that someone who wants to um comment and republic comment? Do you know who that is, Siana?
I don't know who it is. I've asked them to unmute their microphone and they haven't responded.
And being a phone, isn't it pound nine, I believe? To unmute? Or hashtag nine or something?
Well, if we do have someone who wants to comment and they figure out how to do that, just interrupt us, get our attention somehow, and we will definitely take your comments.
Looks like their hand went down, so.
Okay.
I just saw that. I didn't want it to be ignored, so.
Exactly. Thank you, Jeremy. Okay. We're on number C. Approve resolutions for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Construction Funding Application for the city's Wastewater National Pollutant Discharge System Compliance Project. Capital Improvement Project, um, 0171. We have two resolutions, resolution 2021-05 and 2021-06. Staff report, please.
So I'm going to hand this over in just a minute to Brendan Byrd, our Deputy City Engineer. And I'd just like to point out to the council that, you know, Brendan is aggressively going after funds. Uh, as the council knows from previous presentations, we're working on what might be one of the more, most costly um projects in city history, which is finding a new disposal location and upgrading the city's treatment plant. So this is one of the most, more likely funding sources, and I appreciate Brendan uh being proactive and bringing this to council uh at the soonest possible juncture. And with that, I'll hand it over to Brendan Byrd, our Deputy City Engineer.
Thank you, Merritt. So good evening, council. I'm here to uh to talk about this staff report and these resolutions right here. So I guess I'll just dive right in. In late 2020, staff finalized a contract with GHD, our engineering consultant, to complete environmental permitting and funding assistance portions for our NPDES compliance project, which, as Merritt mentioned, is the city's ongoing wastewater treatment plant upgrade project. A specific task in GHD's contract is to assist city staff in the preparation of an application to the Regional Water Quality Control Board's Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program, which offers grants and low-interest loan financing to communities for completing wastewater projects similar to those that we are looking at right now. As an example, this is the same funding source that just funded a planning grant. The, the city just completed a bunch of work on for this particular project and that grant was in the amount of $500,000. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund has been identified as an absolutely critical funding source for this project. And staff plan to use this source to supplement city wastewater reserve funds in order to deliver the construction of this project. If awarded, the program is anticipated to result in approximately five and a half million dollars in grant funding and low-interest loan financing for the total project remainder, which is the total project cost less the grant-funded portion and the amount that the city will be um putting in with wastewater reserve funds. Staff, as Merritt also mentioned, will continue to look at other grant funding opportunities. You know, this project is still a couple of years out, so there's the potential for other project components to come to light that could be funded um creatively through other funding sources. So we'll continue to be aggressive and to, you know, be vigilant in looking for those other sources wherein we could uh, you know, save city funds and ultimately seek outside funding. But right now, we kind of have to plan for the project as if we're not going to find anything else. So that's why um we're aggressively pursuing this application as quickly as we are. So applying to the program for construction funding requires two resolutions that need to be adopted by the city council. The first is the authorizing resolution was, which designates the city manager as the agent who is able to contractually bind the city with a grant agreement. And the second is a reimbursement resolution, which is required for agencies who are seeking loan funding through the program. Based on the current engineer's estimates for the project, right now, we're looking at a total project that could range between 18 and 25 million dollars in cost, depending on the final design and what, if any, additional plant improvements or upgrades are included in the final project. As the project develops, the council will, of course, um, you know, be able to weigh in to decide whether or not to include any additive items and we'll be able to approve the overall construction budget in advance. So more to come on that with, with presentations and business items in the future. At this time, staff are anticipating that city wastewater reserve funds will account for approximately five to eight million dollars of the total project cost. And therefore, based on the construction cost range that I just mentioned, the funding through the Clean Water SRF program could range between 10 and 20 million dollars. Therefore, staff are proposing to apply for a minimum, for a maximum, excuse me, funding amount of 20 million dollars, which will allow flexibility as the project continues to, to develop. The city may ultimately elect to accept a lesser amount, or if, you know, the city ultimately elects to proceed with a smaller project. You know, we don't have to ultimately agree to take that 20 million dollars. It just sets a cap for which that we cannot ask for more money afterwards on. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Brendan. Um, I think our member of the public has their hand up again. If you push star six, you can unmute yourself and um share your comments with us. Did you figure that out or want to comment? Okay, I'm not seeing the hand up anymore.
No, and it looks like they're not on the line anymore either.
Okay, well.
They're not in the queue.
We made it too hard for them. They disappeared. Sorry. Okay, um, any questions or comments uh to Brendan from the council? Anyone wishing to speak from the public? Call the number on the screen. All right, hearing a lot of nothing. Anybody want to make a motion? Do we need to do them one at a time, Siana?
No, you can read the motion just as it stated on the um staff report.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'll move to approve resolutions 2021-05 and 2021-06 reimbursement and authorizing resolutions for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Construction Funding Application for the city of Fortuna Wastewater NP, NPDES Compliance Project.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you, guys. Moving on to our last item of business, approve or authorize a $255,000 supplemental budget request for an additional discretionary payment to the California Public Employees Retirement System, which is CalPERS Pension Trust. Staff report, please.
Yeah, so our finance director, Aaron Felley, will be providing the staff report. And I will say that Aaron is very diligent with trying to stay on top of um how to get the, get the most bang for a buck out of city dollars and reduce our pension costs. So I'm glad um Aaron is paying attention to this and, you know, I think this um, this, this will be a good report for council to pay attention to and to kind of understand some of the implications. And so I'm, I'm pleased Aaron is bringing this tonight for council consideration.
Yeah, well, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So I do have a presentation for you tonight. It's my pleasure to uh present an overview on the California Public Retirement System or CalPERS and more specifically on the unfunded liability as it relates to the city of Fortuna's financial condition. Staff has been working with a CalPERS actuary uh to compile and analyze the information as presented in the staff report and put forward this recommendation to the city council. Uh, so since the staff report does contain a lot of information, I thought it would be uh worthwhile uh to go through and, and try and kind of work through it with a PowerPoint presentation here. And um, I'm going to go ahead and get started. So, uh, unfunded long-term liabilities for the city uh employee pension plans continue to be one of the biggest issues facing local municipalities. In fiscal year 2018, 2019, staff presented and identified a, a number of potential strategies to address the unfunded liabilities, including pros and cons of each strategy with the council. I was determined at that time that making additional discretionary payments when the city was able to was the best strategy. And in fiscal year 2018, 2019, the council gave direction to staff to make an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS for $305,000. Uh, so to start, I would like to, to review some of the goals uh that we put in place uh at that time. And so first, we wanted to be proactive in managing our unfunded liability and not just take the wait-and-see approach. We have taken proactive steps in achieving that, this goal already, including making that additional discretionary payment a couple of years ago. But pension unfunded liabilities are constantly changing. So we want to make sure we stay up to date on what is going on and, and keep the council informed on these changes. Uh, the second goal is to uh to smooth or reduce to the extent possible the future CalPERS man, mandated unfunded liability payments in order to reduce the peak year, year payments. And I'll show a graph which really details that in uh future on slides. And then lastly, uh, we wanted to use this information contained in this presentation as we move, as we begin to work on formulating the proposed fiscal year 2021, 22 budget, uh, which will get underway here later this month. And uh, that starts with staff um meeting with the measuring committee. And that will happen on March 16th. And then we'll again meet with them in April. And after meeting with the measuring committee, uh, we'll be bringing forward the proposed budget to the city council for discussion and consideration. And so it'll be really important uh to have this unfunded liability information in order to make more informed decisions during the budget process and those special budget workshops. So just to kind of jump right into it, this slide shows the city's proportionate share of the net pension liability for each plan the city has adopted. Uh, currently, the city has six plans, um, uh, grouped those into two major categories, those being miscellaneous and safety. The safety plan is for full-time sworn officers only. And all other full-time city employees are placed into the miscellaneous plan. So as you can see, the city's total unfunded liability is over $10 million. The general fund is responsible uh for approximately 70% of that total amount, which translates to over $7 million. And for reference, just a couple of years ago, the city's total unfunded liability was about 8.5 million. So it is increasing. And the reason it's increasing, at least over the last couple of years, is primarily due to the actuarial estimates on investment earnings decreasing by a half a. on investment earnings decreasing by a half a percent. And so what I, uh, what has happened is over the course of of the last couple of years, they've decreased the current discount rate from 7.65 to 7.15. And that was based on, um, kind of the history of what CalPERS has earned in the past. And you can see up here that they've only been earning 5.8% on average over the past 20 years. So, um, the seven for 7.15% is still seen as a little bit high. Um, and so currently, CalPERS is discussing on whether they need to continue to lower this discount rate. But as they lower the discount rate, or the this is essentially the rate that they're expecting to earn on investments. It, of course, means that this is going to go up because as investment earnings go down, employer contributions, uh, is kind of the other side of, um, the puzzle. So they have to increase. So, uh, just a little background information on, uh, how the city got to having, uh, the 10 million dollar funded pension liability. So back in, uh, about 20 years ago, 1999, 2000, CalPERS was 128% funded, which is considered being super funded. And this was primarily, uh, due to the high tech dot com boom, uh, which saw the stock market rise by almost 400%. And so that same year, SP400 was passed, which increased retirement formulas for current, uh, city and city, state and and local employees. And in that, um, SP400 pamphlet, the CalPERS kind of, uh, sold this legislation by saying, um, SP400 would not cost a dime of additional taxpayer money. And, uh, as we get into this, we'll see that that was that did not turn out to be, uh, true. So unfortunately, uh, just just a year later in 2000, 2001, CalPERS took a significant hit due to the dot com bubble bursting. And so, uh, CalPERS funds dropped below the super funded, super funded status. So they dropped from 128% um, down to below 100%. And then again, in 2008, 2009, the Great Recession hit CalPERS funds for a loss of 24% or $58 billion in value. And the fund dropped all the way down to 61% funded status. Uh, and, um, and so you can see over the course of just 10 years, the fund, uh, went from 128% to just 61% funded. So here's a graph that, uh, kind of lays all this out and depicts all the, uh, all those events. So you can see here, 1999, 2000, the stock market was really doing well. Assets were growing, um, way ahead of our actuarial liabilities. And so they went ahead and adopted SP400, which increased state formulas, which started making, um, the light blue columns here grow at a faster rate because um, the the pension formulas were increased, which meant that they were going to have to pay retirees more, uh, in retirement. And then the next year, uh, you can see the the dot com crash here. Um, and it resulted in in, uh, assets being less than liabilities. And then again, here in 2008, 2009, you can see the Great Recession. And so we just never have been able to catch back up um, to where we were prior to, uh, SP400 being passed. So again, this, uh, I show this slide because it it kind of shows the impact of investment earnings can have on the total pension plan. Uh, so invest if investment earnings come up short in any given year, then it means that the employer and employees, uh, contributions to CalPERS have to make up the difference. So if CalPERS does not make their, uh, anticipated rate of return, which is currently at 7.15%, then any, uh, shortfalls ultimately have to be picked up, uh, by the employer or the employee, and and those primarily are passed on to the employer. So um, anytime the investment earnings are less than anticipated, you can see it has a pretty big effect on the overall, uh, distribution between who has to pay uh, the cost of retirement plans. So in response to the increasing unfunded liabilities, the state and CalPERS have taken a number of steps to try and reduce the risk of massive liabilities being tacked on to employers again. Um, it these initiatives, uh, didn't retroactively, uh, solve any problems, but it was, uh, these are initiatives that are looking forward to try and prevent this from happening happening again. So in November of 2012, California voters passed the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, or PEPRA, providing that new employees hired after January 1st, 2013 are required to contribute more to their pensions and must also work longer before they can retire and be begin to receive uh, the benefits promised by their employers. So essentially what PEPRA did was reversed SP400 and, uh, put back the pension, uh, formulas back to the way they were prior to 1999, uh, which was the more sustainable levels. Uh, the expected rate of return on the pension funds investments referred to as the discount rate was reduced to 7.75, seven and a half effective fiscal year 2014, 15. And then in December of 2016, CalPERS voted again to lower its discount rate in steps beginning in fiscal year 18, 19, from seven and a half to seven. And so we have, uh, just about reached that point. And, um, and again, there's there, CalPERS is talking about potentially doing this again and continuing to lower the discount rate so that it more closely matches what CalPERS is actually earning on their investments. Uh, and finally, CalPERS changed the amortization period from 30 years to 20 years for new pension liabilities uh, back in 2018. And the benefit of this is that it allows, uh, cities to pay off their unfunded liabilities quicker, which means that we're not having to pay interest over a longer period of time. So here are, uh, kind of putting all this together, here's our our future projected unfunded liability payments as provided by our CalPERS actuary. So you can see that in 1920, our payment was 617,000. Uh, and it just continues to go up by about $100,000 each year, ultimately reaching, uh, you know, the top here in red and in fiscal year 2031, 32 of 1.2 million. And I do want to note that that would be approximately $40,000 higher had the city not made the $305,000 additional discretionary payment a couple of years ago. So we do see, uh, the benefit of that here on this chart. And so in just, uh, in in just 10 years, we'll see our unfunded liability payment double essentially. And, uh, and so this is really the challenge that we're looking at is is the peak years and trying to figure out a way, uh, be able to afford these within our budget and not have to cut services to our to our citizens. So staff is recommending making, uh, additional discretionary payments to achieve the goals in managing the city's unfunded liability. Um, as mentioned, council has approved uh, an additional discretionary payment a couple of years ago for 305,000. And that did result in interest savings, uh, to the city of $274,000. And so you kind of think of this strategy as as paying more on your home mortgage, uh, or or taking a 15-year loan instead of a 30-year loan. And so you you're going to recognize considerable interest savings by taking this approach. And so, uh, the chart at the bottom of the screen shows the recommended additional discretionary payments in order to smooth future payments. And I'll go ahead and show a graph on the next page, uh, that really kind of brings this to life. So here you can see we are currently in, uh, fiscal year 2021. Uh, if council went ahead and approved the 200 uh, and and $55,000 payment as recommended in the staff report, uh, we would see, uh, the the blue column here. Um, and so kind of looking out at future years and trying to level off the payments around, uh, this this current fiscal year. Um, we would see that for the next three years, we would have to pay uh, more than what our our mandated payment would be. But then over the course of the next 10 years, we would see some pretty good savings, um, especially on our peak years and bring down the peak by almost $200,000, uh, which would go a long ways in those future budget years. And so if we went through, um, the the next 10 years by making those additional discretionary payments that I showed on the last slide, that would result in, uh, $868,000 in savings. And so I'm going to just go back real quick. So you can see the additional payments here. Um, so the next, uh, the $255,000 payment this year. And then really, uh, the next few years are going to be the years that we're going to have to really focus on if we want to, uh, enact this plan. But then after that, um, our additional payments are actually going to be less um, than what our mandated payment would be had we not made these initial few additional discretionary payments. So the savings, uh, more than make up the additional payments after year four. So, uh, let's go ahead and conclude. Uh, the city budgeted, uh, for the mandated unfunded liability payment of 690,000 in fiscal year 2020, 21. Staff is recommending making an additional payment of $255,000, which would require supplemental budget adjustment to be done to the fiscal year 2021 budget. Um, and so I put this graph in here to demonstrate where, uh, the $255,000 would be coming from. So including funds 120, which is building and fund 160, which is the River Lodge, into the general fund portion as these funds are supplemented by the general fund would require about 150,000 to be taken from general fund reserves. Uh, and I wanted to point out, as presented in the mid-year budget presentation, uh, just last month, the estimated fiscal year 2019, 20, general fund financials resulted in a surplus of $100,000 that went into reserves. And additionally, as presented to the Measurie Committee, Measurie revenues exceeded fiscal year 2019, 20 budgeted numbers by approximately $55,000. And, uh, since those funds have been transferred to general fund reserves, could also be used towards this additional discretionary payment. Uh, as for the other funds, 200 to 10, which are storm drain and solid waste, Fund 500, which is water, Fund 550 wastewater, and Fund 590 transit. Uh, the required funds would need to be drawn from reserves. Um, but each of those funds have healthy reserve balances. So, uh, ultimately, the $255,000 payment, um, to CalPERS made today would end up translating in interest payment savings of approximately $277,000 through fiscal year 2044, 45. Um, so so pretty significant savings, uh, were credited with the CalPERS, uh, what CalPERS ends up ends up earning, which, um, as as was shown on previous slides, over the past 20 years has been 5.8%. And that is significantly more than the city could earn in our current investments, um, uh, with Leif for the county pool or, uh, through our Edward Jones investments. Um, those investments currently are ranging anywhere from a half a percent to two to three percent. So the 5.8% is significantly more. And that's why this item was brought, um, before the City Council. But I know that was a lot of information. I'd be happy to go back to any slides or answer any questions. Um, if the if the City Council had any.
Thank you, Aaron. Does anyone from the council have comments, questions? Does anyone from the public want to call in on the number that you see on your screen?
I have a question, if it's okay.
Sure.
I think you answered it right in the last few sentences of your presentation. We basically, it's a in essence of 5.8% is the interest rate we're paying on our money or that we are paying CalPERS for our remaining balance?
The CalPERS, yeah, CalPERS actually charges us, uh,
begin with, or they they originally estimate, um, their estimated uh, discount rate, the current discount rate. So they they kind of charge us 7.15%. Um, but ultimately, they only charge us what they actually earn. And so the average over the past 20 years has been 5.8%. Um, so so, um, this is the rate that we would be, we would be, uh, earning if we paid it now, assuming that CalPERS continues to earn what they've earned in the past.
Okay, so is this an ever-moving target? Like, is this even if we paid to a zero balance because we leveraged something else we own, it's no guarantee that next year we wouldn't have another bill?
Yeah, so every year, uh, CalPERS, you know, they, um, it really depends on what they earn each year. And so if they earn a lot of money and, you know, in theory, if they had a historic year on earnings, they could wipe out the unfunded liability in one year with great investment earnings. But, um, as we've seen, that just is not the case. They they haven't been able to come back to, um, being 100% funded. And so um, let's let's say we do pay, uh, our unfunded liability share and we become 100% funded. Um, and the 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 overall CalPERS pool does really well. Then we would have that credit with CalPERS. And so any, we could use that credit towards fu- future payments. Um, but on the flip side, if we if we if we, um, you know, make our uh, full payment, unfunded liability payment, become 100% funded and CalPERS does worse than what they estimate, then we will have a new unfunded liability created because they did not earn what they expected to earn. So essentially, an unfunded liability is created anytime CalPERS does not earn exactly what they think they're going to earn. That makes sense?
It does. Thank you. I'm just wondering if we own any assets that we could borrow against at less than a 5.8% interest rate? Or 7.15, or whatever that number is that CalPERS makes up annually? Is there any way that we could pay off our balance owed at a lower interest rate? And then make that payment? And so we can budget for it?
Yeah, there are subsidies and, uh, I would be happy to, uh, reach out to some consultants who I know work on this, uh, in particular, but you can issue, uh, uh, essentially issue bonds. And the rate right now is around 3% for for bonds. And we would leverage our our general fund monies in order to do, or general fund revenues in order to do that, future revenues. Um, and we could recognize that difference between, um, what they charge us and what the bond interest, uh, amount is, uh, interest rate is. Um, and so I I would be more than happy to to look into that. And, uh, to get back to the council, if that is something that you guys would be interested in. There there are a number of pros and cons to that. Um, and I, we can get into those more if that's something we want to pursue.
I mean, through the mayor, I'd I'd be interested in having that conversation if if the rest of the council is.
Anyone else want Aaron to check into that?
I, um, I understand Cal Cities, um, has cautioned, um, any entities from from with regard to looking at those bonds or or, um, getting into that kind of a situation with those bonds. We can certainly look into it. There are cities that apparently have gone that direction and have, um, um, gotten into some problems uh, with regard to their general fund. Um, but over and above that, I've got a question for Aaron. Um, is there any indication from actuarials from CalPERS that the discount rate is going to go under 7% anytime soon?
I have not had any specific, um, information straight from CalPERS on this. I've just heard rumblings from, um, some uh, Cal Cities representatives that CalPERS and the state are talking about lowering it, but I, they do not have a timeframe or an amount, uh, that they're going to lower the discount rate to that I have heard.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just say this kind of the same thing that Mike said. Um, pension obligation bonds can be a a detriment. And so if you want to look at it and to learn, but I wouldn't count on it for anything. There have been some issues with other cities. And it it's something to approach with respect and warily. That's all I'll say about that.
I agree with that, Mike.
So in my, in my business, I would consider us property-rich and cash-poor. And is there a way to leverage our And is there a way to leverage our properties rather than go into a bond? Is there a way that we can generate those dollars in another way?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I know there's a lot of rules and restrictions to how government can, can leverage our assets. And, and one of the few ways that we can do that is through issuing bonds. Um, so unfortunately, we don't have a lot of ways to get creative, um, uh, that I am aware of.
Okay.
Fees, bonds and taxes.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Anyone from the public? Haven't seen or got any gestures from Siana saying we have anyone, so we'll close public comment. Are we ready for our motion?
I just wanted to say I got tied up with the pension obligation bond thing, but I, I'm grateful that we have a finance director that, that pencils this out and looks ahead and works to, uh, not just be reactive, but to be proactive to help maintain our fiscal solvency and to, uh, attack this problem with, uh, a plan. So, thank you, Aaron.
Yes, thank you, Aaron. Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a supplemental budget request and make an additional discretionary payment for $255,000 to the CalPERS pension trust to recognize interest payment savings.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right, are we ready? Um, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Uh, as is customary, I'd like to go over a few of the upcoming meeting dates. Our next council meeting is on March 15th at 6 o'clock PM. Our next planning commission will be Tuesday, March 9th, also at 6 PM. Our next Measure E meeting will be March 16th. And then our next Rotor Community Recreation Park District meeting will be on March 3rd at 2:30 PM. Just a few items from my verbal report. I, I attended the Chamber of Commerce, uh, lunch meeting today that featured Senator Michael McGuire. Um, I was glad to see that they're working on a number of things, including, um, a solution to the CRV, um, lack, lack of CRV redemption facility. And, and he also highlighted some of the coronavirus relief, uh, efforts that the state is undertaking. Um, another item is I'm continuing to work with Recology to, and we plan on making a presentation at the next city council meeting to discuss solid waste regulations and potential changes to solid waste service, um, in the city of Fortuna. So anybody interested in that should make sure to be there at the next meeting on March 15th. Um, I'm working with our part-time temporary economic development specialist to complete a CDB, CDBG application to use our program income. This is one of the necessary steps. Um, Jen has been, or Jen Brown has been doing a great job in reaching out to, um, folks at community development block grant and the state, um, housing or urban development. She's getting a lot of answers to different questions, but it looks like we have to commit our, the program income, which is revenue generated from past CDBG applications before we can do some of the coronavirus. So we're focusing our efforts there now. Um, and then once we're able to, uh, get that project underway, and have an application completed and accepted, then we can pursue some of the economic development and some of the, um, coronavirus relief grant projects. So, um, it's, we're still working on that first step and making good progress. I had an opportunity today to observe a trenches pipe installation. If you remember, there was a storm drain repair up at Dunaway Court where we had a failing culvert. There was a number of improvements above the surface, but it was pretty interesting to see, uh, the contractor come out and they basically steam PVC pipe that comes in on a roll. They insert it into the storm drain and then they keep it hot with steam and then they blow it up with, with hot steam and it fills up and then it hardens and you have a new PVC pipe inside of the existing corrugated metal pipe that was damaged. So we have so many storm drains that are failing. It was nice to see another technology. And I think that's going to have broad application within the city. And it's sure nice not to have to go in and do a number of the surface repairs that happened there. So that was the first one of those that we've done in the city and, and we'll probably see more applications of that in the future. Uh, and then I continue to work with the Chamber of Commerce on some of the tourism and marketing efforts. There's some great ideas coming, um, forward through that committee. And so I'll look forward to sharing those with the council in the future once we, we act on some of those. But some of the ideas are, um, looking at, um, how, you know, how can we get an extension to people who are coming to stay at the city? And we're looking at various forms of doing it, doing surveys and, and some complimentary gifts for folks who come and stay, uh, and, and participate in that survey. We're also, uh, Renee has been active. We come up with a number of ideas. She's looking at, uh, a photo contest to try to draw people in, which could also, um, provide useful information, uh, and photographs for, for city marketing efforts. So there's a lot of ideas on the table and once we start to implement some of those, I'll bring that back and share a little bit more with the council. That's all I have in my verbal staff report. Uh, if there's any questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anyone have questions for Merritt? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to future agenda items. Anyone have something for that? Hearing none, we'll move on to city council report.
Madam Mayor, would, would anybody be interested in having, say, a workshop or information about, um, the recent, um, letter and information on Fbid that has come out?
I think that's probably going to end up on the table, but I'm not sure when. So I think that, um, Diana is still with us. Um, Diana, are you interested in having a workshop to talk about it?
Yes, I would love to. And Merritt had sent a list of, um, potential questions to be addressed that, uh, maybe some council members had already had, um, asked. And so we are working on that presentation right now. And once we address it with the business, then we feel it would be appropriate to address it, um, to the community. And so we're happy to schedule that with, um, Merritt. So thank you so much. And I did want to just, can I say one other thing really quick as I'm about to send this email? And we did apply for that $60,000 grant and we just finished our giveaways. And today we drew the winners and we had 497 people from outside of the Humboldt, uh, of Humboldt County entered to win. And we were able to, um, out of those 180 of them were unique visitors. So other, you know, so a lot of them entered in a couple of times, but it was pretty exciting to, um, to send this email out to let the winners know that they get to come and stay in Fortuna and explore the Redwood Coast, um, and all that we have to offer. So please be, uh, welcoming our, um, tourists as they come into town. And so that way they'll stop in our local businesses and can keep them open. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Diana. So I think that, um, Merritt's been working back and forth with, um, both the chamber and Fbid. So we can have, schedule some sort of a workshop in the future, Merritt?
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. And I, yes, I have been more involved and will work on scheduling that. Again, I know that, um, Diana wants to work with her board and get some, some questions answered first. Uh, and so hopefully we can get that scheduled within the next couple of council meetings while, while it's fresh.
Okay.
And it, you know, it may be good too to bring the chamber in and have them share some of their information too. I know we used to do this on a more regular basis and I don't think it would be bad for, for, for me to present, especially for some of the newer council members, what the funding sources are for both the chamber and the Fbid and kind of what their, their goals are for accomplishing. And then having a presentation for me to, uh, of the entities, kind of explaining, you know, kind of what, what, with the, they're actually doing. And I think at least doing this annually would be a great job and it's been a while. So I'll look forward to bringing that back in the future.
Can I just add one more item is that Fbid has hired a board facilitator and that we are going into, uh, uh, as we have a lot of new board members on our board and, but we are going to be going into a board retreat soon. And so she's working on that and her name is Jess Pettit and she's, um, known nationally and she lives in Humboldt. And because of COVID, she's been able to, uh, shift to, uh, online platform. And so she can serve her local community. So we're excited to be working with Jess. She's doing some things right now with the county as well as with City Eureka. And so we're excited to be able to, um, get to utilize her services for Fortuna. So I'll keep you in the loop.
All right, thank you, Diana. All right, Merritt, you know what we are asking for, I'm sure. So anyone else have any future agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to council member reports. Um, Mike Johnson.
Hey, uh, big item lately has been HCOG. Uh, we had our, uh, meeting last week, uh, on the 18th. And I guess it was the week before last now. Time flies. Big thing was the Broadway corridor project. Been a lot of discussion around that and, uh, it has a potential of shaping, uh, Broadway from Herrick all the way to Fourth Street. And priority with, uh, with, uh, pedestrian and bicycle safety, um, transit priority to make it more responsive and timely and meeting the needs of the riders. And we look forward to that moving. We accepted the plan as in concept and we would, uh, actually have seen Caltrans already commit 13 and a half million dollars to redo the south end between Herrick and Truesdale, uh, including some class four bicycle lanes and, uh, beautification. Um, and again, with the, overall, we want to help pedestrian safety in that area. You've, seems like we can't go a month without having a pedestrian accident on Broadway, trying to improve that. And, uh, so we're looking forward to that moving forward. Also, we got a report on, uh, the Broadway, I mean, the Broadway, the Eureka Arcade corridor. And looking ahead, uh, this week, the design should be complete for that. And in May, the CTC is going to allocate construction funding for that to get, actually to move ahead in earnest. And so we're looking forward to that. Last Chance Grade, uh, we've heard about that, has actually taken in a, uh, an additional challenge lately. And they have, uh, committed to a slide mitigation project up there. Uh, could be interesting using a spider excavator on the, the slopes to help, uh, get the debris off and to stabilize what's there, stabilize the slopes. And hopefully they'll have the, all the alternatives done for that design in April and, uh, get a committee, working committee together to whittle through that and to come up with a final, come up with a design. So those are some of the big things going on in HCOG. Uh, other thing is the greenhouse gas portion of the regional transportation plan. And, uh, this Friday, I will be participating in an orientation, uh, for the Redwood, uh, Coast Energy Authority. As an alternate, they want, would give me the opportunity to get, see that, to see what they do, how they do it and what their, uh, processes are. And a fun thing, I dropped off some chili cook-off pictures from the Pothole Posse days for the museum and for consideration of inclusion in the book. So there could be some pictures of the Pothole Posse in the new book as it comes out for the anniversary of the rodeo. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Losi.
Thank you, Mike. Um, the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, speaking of them, hosted a question and answer Facebook event with regard to the electric vehicle rebate program, which amounts from 25 to $3,500 and they are available now. Um, in addition, there's a federal tax credit that's available. The plug-in, um, hybrid models have rebates from 1,500 to 3,500. There are eligibility requirements that you have. I, are, uh, there have been in the past electric bike rebates, but those, um, are now all reserved and unavailable at this time. I did attend a, uh, RCEA board meeting on February the 25th and talked a lot about the cold snap that was recently experienced in Texas and across the Midwest. And it did have a negative effect on, uh, RCEA, yeah, with the, regard to the community choice, choice energy. Uh, but, and most of the natural gas imports, uh, or, or natural gas is imported from out of the state of California. Um, and there, they did see an increase for about a week, but natural price, uh, uh, natural gas prices fluctuate quite a bit. And we're told that, um, it's nothing to be concerned with. Um, and, uh, we shouldn't see those huge increases that some people in, in the state of Texas saw. Um, the board okayed a contract, uh, for staff to, or okayed for staff to enter into a con, uh, contract negotiations for an amendment to the existing power purchase agreement at a reduced rate, but for a longer term with the Humboldt Sawmill Company in Scotia. This is with regard to their biomass production. And we did have a, have a discussion about biomass energy pollution. Um, once that, uh, negotiation reaches an agreement, then that amendment will be brought back to the board. Um, if there's a, uh, an agreement made. The board also approved a professional services agreement with San Joaquin Valley Clean Energy Authority for rural regional energy network and business plan development. Um, and I'm, I'm still learning about what all that is as well as, um, the long duration, uh, uh, storage, which I attended that meeting on the 25th of February. Um, during the board meeting, it was kind of, um, ironic. We had a discussion item that, uh, was regarding quarterly study sessions to help cut down on the length of the board meetings, which that board meeting was almost three hours long. But you know what? We never did get to that item to just about how we can reduce the, the length of our meetings. Uh, and then in addition to that, there was a closed session item that we never did get to. I will be also attending that orientation, uh, along with, uh, with, uh, Mike on Friday, I believe it is. With regard to LAFCO, I have an orientation coming up tomorrow. And then the la- next LAFCO meeting will be March 17th, of course, at the county office of Zoom. So that's all my report for now.
All right, thank you, Mike. Uh, Jeremy?
Well, I'm grateful to say that staff did most of the heavy lifting for me. You heard a great report from, uh, Cameron on what's going on with, uh, Fortuna, uh, Parks and Rec. And then you heard briefly from Diana about some of the happenings going on at Fbid. I wanted to let you know that you all received a letter from a community member on some of the great work that Fbid did for her local business, um, regarding the, uh, business resiliency grants that happened. Um, those grants have closed right now, but, um, the Fbid staff definitely did, uh, a lion's share of work on behalf of local businesses. If there was any grants that appeared to be overwhelming in some of the, the application processes, uh, they definitely made themselves available and went above and beyond to make sure those businesses had an opportunity to, uh, take advantage of those grant funds. Um, beyond that, uh, I don't have a lot more to report other than just, uh, attending meetings with Chamber and, and Senator McGuire and going to his town hall meetings on Zoom recently. Uh, and, um, I'm looking forward to Thursday, we have another Fbid, uh, board meeting, uh, coming up. And, um, yeah, our, our cannabis tour is coming up this week. So I'll have to report. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. Tammy? Did we lose Tammy?
Looks like we lost her.
Okay, skipping over Tammy unless she shows up again. And we had another oversight committee meeting for the redevelopment funds to get the ROPS for Eureka squared away. So, um, that was just a real quick one. I have a mayor select meeting coming up on Thursday, I think it is, to mayor select meeting coming up on Thursday, I think it is, to um appoint an uh alternate to LAFCO as I resigned from that position because Mike got the actual board position. So I have that coming up. Um, I was at Redwood Memorial on the nineteenth presenting a proclamation to healthcare workers and um walking through the hospital with the administration pack, uh thanking caregivers and passing out little bags of treats that they had bated up. And apparently they are going to be doing something like that over the next few months, just trying to encourage the healthcare workers and show their appreciation for them. I've had several meetings with various people regarding the closing of the OB at the hospital and uh Michelle, Bushnell and I actually had a phone conversation with Roberta this morning and we talked about the whole issue and the outcry from the community. And she basically is saying that it's a done deal. She was going to talk with Christian Hill and schedule a community outreach meeting. She was going to get back to both Michelle and I today and let us know when that meeting was going to be, tomorrow with the latest, she said. The interesting thing is that we signed off with her at eleven oh five and during the chamber meeting at lunchtime, twelve o'clock, Becky Juckman, they already knew there was a meeting scheduled for Thursday at five o'clock and Michelle and I have heard nothing back from her yet. So that is pretty disappointing that she didn't even bother to follow through and let us know what was happening. To me, that speaks volumes and it makes me really upset. So there are some websites that uh Dr. Dittmer shared on Facebook, Save Our Babies, Save Our Moms and Babies, and then a website, savermombabies.org. Um, please chime in, get on those sites. Let's see what we can do. And we also will be going to the Washington um CEO and the doctor that um, Dr. Dittmer mentioned. I'm just waiting to get um contact information from some of the people that are involved and are kind of fighting back. So a lot of things going on there. It's just a shame that our community is um it comes down to taking care of our community members and our moms and babies or the dollars, which is really, really disappointing. So I don't know. We're on that as we figure it all out. And REDAC continues to loan money to a lot of local businesses and um it's just really good to see that local businesses are hanging in there, that they're actually making their payments to REDAC and they are, you know, just pushing through this whole COVID thing. We all got to attend our ethics meeting last week. That was just fun. Um, we are looking forward to our Cal Cities meeting on Friday. The city of Eureka mayor Susan Seaman is starting some kind of a traffic study or traffic committee because they've had so many issues in Eureka. They've invited me to be part of that. I'm not really sure where I fit in with that, but I do have a meeting. It's March tenth, so I'll probably sit in on the first one and see where that's going. I'm not sure how it affects Fortuna, other than Fortuna drivers do go to Eureka. So we'll see if that is something that I want to stay involved in or if that's kind of more of a Eureka thing. Um, Mike Maguire, Senator Mike Maguire was our guest for Chamber today. That was nice to have him interacting with Fortuna. And uh, Mike Losi brought up the housing issues and the housing bills that are on the table for the state. And so um, we're going to try to set up a meeting with Senator, Senator Maguire, Mike Losi and myself to talk about the issues that the bills um around housing are creating for small communities like ours because um Senator Maguire seems to think that it's really not a big deal and they really would have some huge impacts. And so we're going to try to follow through with that. And I think that is probably it. That's probably plenty. So yeah, cannabis chores this week to um educate the council a little bit more and uh lead up to our meeting of discussing our ordinance. Uh, right now we have a no cannabis ordinance in the city of Fortuna. And so we're just kind of just trying to get educated to see if we want to change that, if we want to introduce um some aspects of the business, but not all, or, or if we just want to leave it as is. So we'll be having a, a town hall type meeting the best we can on that as soon as we all get educated. So my education starts tomorrow. So thank you, Merritt, for setting that up. And uh, if anyone else, if no one else has anything, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Senator Mayor, I have a quick, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say thank you, Sue, for picking up on the uh St. Joe's Redwood Memorial issue um in taking the lead if you, if you, you know, will on that. We appreciate that.
I'm meeting with some people in Mary Bowwinkle tomorrow night to, I was just actually going to write a story, so we'll see where that goes.
I'm interested in that conversation as well. Um, I'm not sure what we can do as a city, but I think we as a community um have always proven that we can rally in these conversations. Um, do you know the platform for the town hall meeting on Thursday at five?
I don't. I know nothing. Apparently Becky Juckman, he knows a whole lot more than I do and I'm the one who requested the information. So we'll see if she meets me at any point in time, anytime soon.
One thing I forgot to mention, just for a fun little side note to end on a happy note. Um, also at Chamber, it was announced that the Humboldt Skate is going to have a drive-up dinner on uh April ninth uh from four thirty to seven thirty. So um, we'll have another meeting between now and then to announce time and location. I just heard the date and time today, but location will be vitally important for people to show up and get some food, but it'd be a great opportunity to support another local uh fundraising opportunity.
All right, anybody else? Anything you forgot? All right, hearing none, we need a motion to adjourn. Tammy, apparently Tammy's iPad died.
There's no Tammy, so we can't.
I know, right?
In the script, oh, go ahead.
I will uh step in gently for the Mayor Pro Tem to make a motion to adjourn. My first time ever.
And Mike, uh, Johnson was the second. All right, all in favor? I, all right, night you guys. Thank you, Siana. Thank you, Merritt.
Good night.